Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. First up on the agenda is the Police Department Promotion Chief. Welcome, everyone.
Good afternoon. I apologize. We had an accident on the 144th, so we had a crowd that was ready to come down, and then they all got pulled away to that. So they may come trickling in. Probably not before we're done, though. We're here today to promote Tom Peterson to the rank of Sergeant. I've said this before, and I'll say it again. The Sergeant is the best job a police officer can have. You've got some authority, but you're not tied to a desk. You still get to respond to the phone calls, but your rank affords you the ability, for the most part, to avoid standing out in the rain and snow directing traffic. The people above you are jealous because of the freedom you have, and the officers still kind of like you because you're doing a lot of the stuff that they're doing. You provide practical guidance and advice to get the job done. And if things go terribly wrong, you always can blame the lieutenant. That's just the way it goes, but it is the perfect rank. Tom's been with the department for 12 years. He spent a summer interning with us before he got hired on. He's currently assigned to Investigations. He's going to stay in Investigations after this promotion. He spent several years as a patrol officer. He's a sniper on our SWAT team, and he works part-time on the US Marshal's Fugitive Task Force, based on his assignments and collateral duties. I think it's fairly obvious I trust his judgment and decision-making ability because some of those assignments are a little sketchy at the very least, so we need some good people in there. Teddy Roosevelt once said that the best executive is the one who has sense enough to pick a good person to do the job he or she wants done, and then enough self-restraint not to meddle with them while they're doing it. Luckily for Tom, Teddy and I think alike. The trick is always how to find those good people. Again, when I look for somebody in a leadership position, I'm looking for somebody that's got that it factor. They have to have earned the trust of their coworkers, because otherwise, nobody's going to follow them. They have to genuinely care about the people that work for them, and they have to care about the organization. They have to strive to always make decisions for the right reasons. And you notice I didn't say make the right decisions all the time, because none of us is perfect. Except for you, boss. See, that's a little tip. Kiss up to move up, Tom. That's what we're talking about. But if you make decisions for the right reasons, even if you're wrong, you can live with yourself and sleep at night and defend yourself. And kind of in line with that, if you do make a mistake, it's very important you have to own it, fix it, learn from it, and move on. Tom kind of hits all of those bullet points. He's one of those unique people on the department who doesn't just know what we do and how we do it, but he strives to find out why we do it. And unless you understand the why part, you can't make meaningful changes, which are going to positively impact our department, the employees, the city, and the community. But Tom is one of those people. This has been a while coming for him. I'm excited to see what the future holds, so please join me in congratulating him on this milestone.
Thank you.
The next item is a presentation from the Marion Civil Rights Commission. We turn it over to Alicia.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce Renee Forsythe-Christie. She's the Chair of the Marion Civil Rights Commission. Also present is Katie Tanner. She's Vice Chair.
Renee? Good afternoon. We, the commission, are excited to be celebrating our 10-year anniversary as a commission. And we meet the first Wednesday of the month at 6 o'clock at the library currently, and we have a nine-member commission. This is the commission's second year of our strategic plan that was implemented in April of 2023. The strat plan consists of creating awareness, education of the community, acceptance, and building partnerships. Simply put, bringing more to Marion. To help facilitate all of this, we adopted our outreach plan in 2024. Since October of 2021, there has been 26 inquiries. The majority of these are housing-related and specifically related to service animals or companion animals. This led the commission into hosting our first event in April for Fair Housing Month. We had two speakers. Eric Scoban, who's an attorney with Scoban Companies and a certified instructor for the Iowa Association of Realtors. He spoke specifically about the laws concerning service animals and companion animals and how the law views the differences. We also had Sherri Ross with Definitely Dogs. Sherri, who's company-trained service dogs for individuals with specific needs and veterans, came accompanied by her own service dog named Dewey. Sherri shared, do that a number of times, many interesting success stories of folks that she and her company have helped and serviced throughout the years. We also had six booths from various organizations join us that are housing-related to showcase many of the services that are available in the community. These partners were Marion Cares, Habitat for Humanity, and Waypoint, to name a few. They had goodies at their booths and fun giveaways to interact with the public. And finally, the Cedar Rapids Area Association of Realtors-sponsored cookies and water. We were a little disappointed in the turnout, but we plan to find solutions for a better outcome at our next event. We also were the lead in the Pride painting in the Uptown Alleyway. A picture of a rainbow painted street on Facebook last fall was the inspiration for this. We thought it might be a cool thing to do and actually inspire the LGBTQ youth of Marion. We did have some challenges with getting that accomplished. Instead, we got a Marion-choked bug with rainbow colors at the entryways, but the rain derailed us, and it was washed away before the first Marion Pride event of a fashion drag show. But at our last commission meeting, we had four members of the public come and speak to us and to thank us, and they expressed how happy they were to see what we had started in Marion. Two of our commissioners were at the event giving out Pride bracelets and said that the event was well-attended and everyone was having a great time. The commission intends to partner or be involved in any way we can with other organizations for future Pride events in Marion. In our outreach plan, we had prioritized proclamations and have made a concerted effort into finding members of related organizations to accept monthly proclamations. Like you saw this past July, when Sherri Ross with Definitely Dogs came to accept the proclamation for National Disability Day. We all are also writing social media posts as well as articles for the Marion Messenger to promote the commissioners' involvement and presence. The commission continues to partner with the Cedar Rapids Civil Rights Commission on outreach. There are some events that we may not have enough participants from our own commission due to conflicting schedules. So it is advantageous to partner with them, as they usually pay for the booths and allow us to join them. This way, our commission has a presence at these larger community events, which is still a great exposure for us. Their civil rights executor does attend our monthly meetings and shares information of their events and reports of national conferences that they attend. But our commission's strategic plan includes a focus of bringing more outreach events of our own to Marion in the future. It's our way to advance this slide. Oh, I'm here. Okay. Low to moderate income housing grant. This started in 2019 with $10,000. $62,000 was awarded this year. Over $130,000 have been awarded locally. Organizations receiving funding over the years include Willis State Home Services, Waypoint, Four Oaks, and Marion Cares. Of the $130,000, Marion Cares has received $108,500 in funding since 2020. Marion Cares used the LMI funds to provide rent and utility assistance to qualified recipients. In 2023, 96 households received assistance from Marion Cares. The funding provided through the LMI grant provided support to 27 of those families. The commission has been very proud to be involved with the LMI funding process. And finally, after 10 years of focusing or making the public aware of our existence, we look forward to turning the page with more community-focused events and partnering with local organizations.
Thank you, Renee. Questions or comments for Renee? Anyone?
Congratulations on 10 years, and please thank the commission on our behalf for all their great work. You know, the commission is an extension of this council and of our city organization, and the work you do reflects on us. And so we really appreciate all the great work you're doing. And don't hesitate to seek, you know, input from us on anything or any assistance you need. So, thank you.
Will do.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Next item is a budget discussion. Turn it over to Leanne.
Thank you. Today, we continue on the series that we've been doing to develop the fiscal year '26 budget. Last time, we spoke about the five-year financial plan models that was looking forward. Today, we're going to take a moment to look at the results of fiscal year '23, '24. So as I always start with, just the caveat, remember that numbers are not finalized. We are going through the audit process right now, so there may be some changes. Also, just bearing in mind that a number of carryover requests are coming forward from departments. These are items that might have been ordered in the previous fiscal year but had not yet been paid, or there might be some delay as to why they hadn't, the purchases hadn't been made. And the report tonight, we will be comparing to fiscal year '24 estimates. So this is the estimated amount that we put together at the time we were formulating the fiscal year '25 budget. And that's important to us because that is what we had used to compute where we thought the fiscal year-end balances for each of the funds would land. So we'll start with the general fund. From a high level, the fund was estimated to decrease in fund balance by $581,000, but instead increased by $2.5 million. Driven by, this is driven by revenues exceeding projections by $1.6 million and expenditures being under the projection by $1.5 million. We'll drive into the details here. So looking at the revenues, these are variances over $20,000. The large one being the transfer-in from pension, that's not really a, something we should consider because that was just a change in the way we were accounting, moving some funds out of the pension fund. The big ones here are interest revenue, franchise fees, and sales of capital assets. Any questions on these? I did want to caveat the traffic fines, just a reminder that we did estimate some revenue. So if you're looking at budget, we hadn't budgeted anything because we hadn't contemplated doing traffic cameras. But at the time, we put together the estimates for fiscal year '24. We did include a number, so that's why it's only showing us $27,000.
What were the capital asset sales?
Capital asset sales are when we sell pieces of equipment. The majority of these, I believe, actually came from the Parks Department. I don't know, Seth, if you want to comment on any of... So this is just pieces of equipment that have been replaced, and we sell.
Yeah, so we, this is actually, a lot of it is from the skid loader. We were planning on keeping, but we actually ended up trading it. So, and that was majority of the capital assets for that.
Your Honor.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, we have a question.
Yep. Leanne, on the, on this slide, the last item, DEA reimbursements, what, what is DEA?
Drug Enforcement Agency.
Okay, all right. I thought that's what it might be. I just wanted to clarify.
And that's one that we've kind of discussed, is kind of a difference between the way the police department was budgeting and the way we were entering revenues. So we will get that figured out this next fiscal year. Switching over to the expense side. The big ones here, of course, are police and fire, which make up the largest share of our budget year over year. On the fire and police side, benefits, full-time salaries are the big ones. And then also capital. And this is not... This is actually kind of expected because of the large turnover that we've seen in the police department and then also just the reorganization that we've seen in the fire department. So that's been anticipated. When we look at library, these makes up of salaries, contractual services, and repair maintenance utilities. Communication center was primarily salaries. Parks and Recreation, primarily salaries. Planning, contractual services, and salaries. HR Department with staff development, contractual, and employee benefits. Engineering is contractual, followed by salaries. I will note that you heard salaries several times, but we did implement the compensation study in October, which was around the same time we were trying to put estimates together. So that did make that a bit of a challenge. Any questions on by organization?
Steve?
Yeah, the one about the, the police one, I kind of expected. The one on the fire, I did not. I guess I thought we were fully staffed at the beginning of the year. I mean, I think we had nine new hires up here at one time, and that was going to get us fully staffed. So I was a little bit surprised that that came under budget by that much.
Yes, so you're right. We did add those personnel, and that funding was in place on July 1st. However, they did not start until later in the year in September. So there was vacancy savings within that first quarter as well.
Oh, so it was a late start?
Yes, that's correct.
Compared to what was budgeted?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Those FTEs were not filled effective July 1st.
Okay.
And so also through attrition and promotions, and where people were starting within their positions also created some vacancy savings.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Anyone else? Go ahead.
And then looking at it by account. On the benefit side, fire and police, fire was $63,000 of that, police was $23,000. Full-time salaries, police made up $162,000. The E911 Communication Center, $57,000, and the Fire Department, $235,000. Health insurance, $97,000, and fire, $66,000 in police. Health insurance is one of those where, when we're budgeting for positions, we always budget assuming they're going to take a family plan. However, they may choose to take a single plan, so that's what largely makes that up. Or they may choose not to use the city's insurance at all. On the part-time salaries side, we see $93,000 in parks, rec, and pool, and $62,000 in library, and $16,000 in fire, as we saw Sherri Williams leave. Any questions on those? I did also want to note tech contracts and software. If you actually go back to your reports, I combined both lines together. And I, the group did a great job of pointing out the fact that I missed the percentage, and then I didn't add it for you. Yes, so it's actually negative 14% for tech contracts and software. And that was as we were combining the two lines. There were counting differences. Any questions on any of these?
Yeah, and that's another one that surprised me because I thought that's an area that organizations everywhere ought to be investing a lot of money in. And I know that with all the challenges that we have out there, trying to keep everything safe and secure. So was there a particular item that we did not buy that we anticipated? Because I know we're trying to keep all of our software up to date for scammers and phishing and all of that. Is there something we just put off or did not need that we budgeted?
Without digging into it, I don't know for sure why it came in that way, but I think we, I thought we budgeted for everything we needed.
Oh, yeah. I mean, compared to the budgeted amount, it was a pretty significant amount we did not use. And that's kind of what surprised me on that. I just didn't know if there's some major item that somehow we determined that we didn't need.
I thought I can think of, I mean, we're always being really aggressive on pricing. So a lot of time, we have to budget MSRP, but we come in a little bit, quite a bit under sometimes. I'm like, a lot of times, network equipment, we've come in underneath on that when we do like a bulk order.
All right.
Better to be on that side than the other side.
I just wanted to be clear.
Anyone, okay, anyone else? All right, go ahead.
So again, just a summary of the general fund. We did see that ending fund balance increase by $2.5 million from what our original estimate was. Wanted to remind the council and the public that while $2.5 million in growth on that fund balance looks like a lot of money, as we look towards the future years on the general fund model, we are still expecting with that growth to see that reserve drop below our required amount in fiscal year '28. So we are... That did manage to bump it out a year or two. Looking at the road use fund summary, we did see growth here as well of $1.56 million. Big thing here is going to be road use tax revenue, $384,000. Miscellaneous revenue of $88,000. And then sale of capital assets, which is the same. We're getting rid of some of the old equipment. And then on the expense side, the big one is that we didn't do our transfer out to replacement this year. They had to do a timing of payment for the equipment, so we just hadn't done the transfer. Any questions on road use?
Questions? Okay.
So just a reminder, also with road use, I didn't put the model in for each one. We will have large capital expenditure in a couple of years as we anticipate the salt building and also the bond. We've got a balloon payment on a bond. Switching over to sanitary sewer. This fund, we saw cash added of $2 million in the fund on an estimated budget of $1.27. This is one that I'm just going to note for the public. This is purposeful as we anticipate the large capital expenditure that you saw go out in the paper recently regarding the improvements being made in Cedar Rapids at the water treatment plant. So we're gradually increasing the rate in anticipation of that large capital expenditure. Big variances on the sanitary sewer fund. Interest revenue. Contracts 28E, this was because we'd done the renegotiation with Cedar Rapids and brought that rate down. And then the rest is related to the reorganization that we did with the Public Services Department. Questions on sanitary sewer? Looking at solid waste, we increased our fund balance by $600,000, and we had estimated that we'd increase it by $414,000. Again, this is in anticipation of large capital expenditures that we're making. Interest revenue is the big revenue difference with full-time salaries and contractual other services. The contractual other services line was for the solid waste study Phase 2 waste diversion. That was budgeted at $50,000. That has been delayed. Questions on solid waste? Urban forest, we had budgeted or estimated $102,000 for growth in the fund, and we saw 88. Here's the variances for that one, with interest revenue being the largest increase. On the contracts side, we had grounds maintenance and forestry maintenance supplies. I know the miscellaneous revenue in this fund was largely salvage harvest. Any questions on urban forest? Seth would be more than happy to answer.
Questions? Okay.
Stormwater management fund, we had estimated that we draw down the fund balance $20,000 and ended up increasing the fund balance $176,000. Looking at the differences, their interest revenue, collections, and hookup fees on the revenue side. And then on the expenditures, full-time salaries, operational supplies, contracts, other services. Full-time salaries, I will say the estimate was off because there was definitely a typo on one of them, just a miskey while we were putting the estimates together. And then for contracts, there was $100,000 budgeted for the stormwater master plan and $24,000 that was not used for basin contracts. Questions on stormwater?
None.
So moving on to capital, we had budgeted $59,000, $59.37 million, and we actually spent $37.79 million. As you can see, the lion's share this year was in facilities with the public service facility taking that, and then sanitary sewer as work continues on the trunk sewer projects. These were the variances for the projects over $1 million. Most of these are just due to timing or delays in federal funding as we work through the federal process on a number of the projects. Any questions on these? And then we always like to end on a positive note. So here are all the projects that we've completed in fiscal year '24. Big ones are the library building, Central Plaza, 10th Avenue side paths, Neighborhood Street improvements, and Indian Creek Trail. And with that, we'll see...
Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to... I want to provide some context, and Leanne, if I misspeak, please jump in. Because when we look at the snapshot here today, and especially on the general fund, to have to outperform where we were at from a budget perspective, that's obviously a positive mark. I'm very proud of our, our organization, our entire staff for how they're budgeting and how they're managing those budgets. As council knows, we implemented the zero-based budgeting process a couple of years ago. So when we're going through every, every action, every program initiative that is budgeted, and we're starting at zero, so we're budgeting for what we need. What that has done is it has allowed us as an organization to better situate ourselves compared to our peers when you look at the recent legislation that was passed last year. That has had a significant impact on municipalities across the state on the ability to fund vital services. So I want to compliment our team on the approach for budgeting under Leanne's leadership on how we've done that. And we've taken our time over the last couple of years to methodically... And we've taken our time over the last couple of years to methodically deconstruct the various aspects of our budget and build it up to make sure that the revenue is aligning properly with the expenses, that we are using funding. You know, we had, interest rates are much higher, so that's, that's a significant increase in some of our revenue, but that's something that is volatile. We can't rely on that to fund ongoing operations. And so we had the discussion with the council during the budget work session recently about a policy amendment which you approved a couple of meetings ago as we move into the budgeting for the, for next year. All of what we've done is, is ensuring, one, we're being fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars, but also ensuring that we can weather the storms that we anticipate in the future with respect to emergencies or further impacts from, from state legislation. So again, really proud of the team for under, you know, buying into the philosophy, really implementing the philosophy that we've been talking about with the council over the last couple of years. There's a lot of uncertainty in the future. And when we look at the fund balance for, for the general fund that Leanne showed on one of the first couple of slides, we can't forget where we came from. And when we look back the last couple of years, we've added additional firefighters, which Councilman Jensen had pointed out, but as FY '23 and the previous budgets, we had to eat into those reserves at a time when there was some legislation that was passed, not just House Bill 718, but some other bills that were passed that, that slashed and made us go further into the fund balance. So while it's positive this year, we are still playing catch up to where we were in previous years at a time when we're deconstructing and rebuilding to ensure that we can make sure that we continue to provide the services that our residents expect. One of the other things that's really important to highlight when we look at some of these, these numbers is that when we have vacancies and we have had vacancies in our organization, we don't simply just go forward and rehire. What we've done is we've taken a systematic look at those vacancies to make sure that those positions fit the organization. And so because of that effort, we have been able to, we've had some savings because of those efforts. Those things are not planned, but that is good practice that our team has been doing again with, with your guidance, which we're thankful for. But I, I don't, while the numbers are positive on the screen, I just want to make sure that we all go into this next budget season to, to make sure that we're, we're fully aware that there are still a lot of things that are happening. There's a lot of unknowns. This budget that Leanne's reporting on implemented some significant initiatives that we did our best to, to contemplate, to put numbers in, as she mentioned, the compensation study, which was a very big lift for this organization. And we still have a lot of work to do. So these are positive and they should be celebrated, but it's, it is one snapshot in time and we have to be cognizant that there's still more that we have to do and we have to be vigilant on as we go forward into this, as, as we get going into our upcoming budget process. Can underscore the stuff that's happening in Des Moines. As the council knows, we're working with our lobbyists and our, some peer communities on trying to be as aggressive as possible of bringing solutions so that we can continue to fund our, our staff, our services and the amenities that our, our communities expecting us to provide for them. So this is great work by our team. Applaud the council for the leadership and the guidance as we went through the process last year. But while the numbers are positive and I don't want to sound like a wet blanket here, we, they're to be celebrated, but they're also, we, we have to be cognizant of what is coming down. And certainly the models that, that Leanne and DA Davidson have helped construct are going to be vitally important as we go through to continue to monitor, update and anticipate so we can quickly respond so that we can continue what we're, what we're charged to do. So again, I want to compliment the team, the organization and the council. At a time when other organizations are laying off staff, shutting down programs, not filling swimming pools, we've been able to, to accomplish quite a bit in a very challenging year, so.
Thank you for that perspective. Any comments or questions? Okay. Do you have anything else, Leanne? Or is that it?
Just a thank you and I'll see you next time with the environmental scan.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's hard work on this. Our next item is a discussion on fire department emergency response time targets.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jamie and I are here to talk to you about some policy direction from you tonight. So, but we're gonna, we're gonna go back in time just a couple of years into the past to provide an update to you on an action plan. So shortly before, or shortly after I started, Rachel Murtaugh and I, who Rachel's joining us tonight in the audience, we did a, essentially an environmental scan of response performance. We introduced a term at that time called standard of cover. And we looked at what is, what is the response performance capability of the fire department? What geographical gaps may exist relative to response performance capability? And we also talked about just looking at a, a high level of vulnerable population data and what does that look like at a high level? And so we shared some information with council at that time. And what, what was determined within our action plan is that we needed to research our community. We needed some, to formalize our strategic plan as we moved into the future. At that time, the department did not have a strategic plan, but we're excited to provide an update to you tonight to share, as a reminder, we have completed that strategic plan. It was completed in the spring of 2023. And on the, on the backside of that, to tie into it is this community research that's teed up, which includes the evaluation of the emergency medical services program, which we'll be providing a very more, much more formal update the next month on next steps pertaining to that. But then also establishing benchmarks, response time benchmarks for moving into the formal community risk assessment and standard of cover. And so that's what we're going to focus on tonight, but wanted to set the stage for that, that, that this goes back all the way to the fall of '22. And we're really just continuing to follow with our action plan as we're moving forward. So as I mentioned tonight, we're going to be looking for formal direction from council in regards to some benchmark, a benchmark specifically, but we're going to be introducing a new term for you and Jamie's going to talk about that. And, and that term is total response time, which is critically important when somebody calls 911, 911 in our community because we want to be measuring what we're, what we're providing against a target, identifying where gaps may exist and then attacking those gaps as we move into the future to provide consistent and reliable services to our community. So the objective this evening is to establish a travel time benchmark. And when I talk about travel time, you're going to see here in a minute, but we're talking about the actual movement or our vehicles traveling across the community as a segment of that total response time. But what this benchmark is going to allow us to do is to set a foundation, foundational expectation or a consistent target as we do our community research with this EMS system study and our community risk assessment standard of cover to help us identify planning and future resource needs as we move into the future. So that community-driven strategic plan that was completed in, in the spring of 2023 included both external stakeholders and internal stakeholders. And we identified several strategic goals within that work. And one of them was to identify and formalize the scope and level of services provided by the department to meet community expectations and support future organizational planning. And that's precisely what we're moving into within these studies. The top priority and the expectation from our external stakeholders was speed. And so the key thing that we're going to be talking about tonight is what does speed look like if we're talking about time? What quality practice standards are out there? What does our, what do our comparable communities, what do they do in regards to benchmarking? And we're going to share some of that information with you this afternoon.
Thanks, Chief. So before I get started on all the information on this slide, I just want to quickly reintroduce myself for those of you I haven't met. My name is Jamie. I, I may still be the newest employee to Marion, I'm not sure, but I am the new management analyst for the fire department. I'm on week six. Some of you may remember me on day two, doing a quick introduction. But I can tell you, over the last six weeks, I have learned a lot about the fire service, learned a lot about the mission and vision of Marion and the growth that we are anticipating. And coming into this from a business lens, I'm super stoked, no pun intended. I'm super stoked about the fire department and administration there and their focus on setting benchmarks so that they can measure them, their performance against key performance indicators to really drive improvement for the community. So back to the slide. So total response time is made up of three segments with today's focus, as Chief said, being on establishing the benchmark for travel time. In the future, we will define the other segments, but as we begin work on that standards of cover and geospatial studies like the EMS study, we are seeking formal direction from council on a travel time benchmark. So to break down what total response time is, so a resident has an emergency and calls 911. Dispatch answers the call, collects needed information and dispatches rescue to respond. That segment is called alarm handling time. The second segment, turnout time is the amount of time it takes for that rescue crew to gear up, report to their apparatus and let dispatch know that they're en route. And travel time and what we're focused on today is exactly what it sounds like. It's the amount of time that, that rescue unit is en route to the resident. So all of those together make up that total response time, which in summary is the amount of time it takes for that dispatcher to answer the call until that first unit arrives on scene to begin life and or property saving measures. As response, as response times have a direct impact on incident outcomes, the National Fire Protection Association, or the NFPA, created standards for departments to help guide them in pursuing effective and efficient response. You can see the, the benchmarks here on the slide with travel time being set at four minutes. It is important to note that the NFPA standard 1710 is measured in the 90th percentile. Essentially what that means is that nine times out of 10, the fire service is able to execute a predictable response for its community members. So what does that four-minute benchmark look like for Marion?
So on the slide, we're going to start focusing on the map, which is on the left. And before I begin, I, I do have to recognize Rachel Murtaugh with City GIS. She, she helped craft this map for us and she's just a tremendous contribution to not only the work that we do within the fire department, but nearly every department within the city. So very thankful for her to be here as well this afternoon for this presentation. But so, so what this map is, is showing is the location of our three fire stations in Marion. It also includes a geographical boundary of Marion Township, which we also provide service to. So from each one of the fire stations, you'll see there's this, this colored shape or what's called in GIS terms, polygon around each one of the fire stations. And what that polygon is representing in this map is the travel time geographical area that a computer simulation has been able to identify that we could possibly reach in four minutes. So this is what's called a four-minute travel time polygon around each one of our fire stations. Now you'll notice that there is some overlap in some of those into the core area of the city and we're going to talk about why that's important here in a second, giving a couple examples. But I want to qualify these travel time polygons for you as you're looking at the map. You'll see some gratiated areas that are not, that are not colored and those are geographical gap areas that we have seen in the past. But to qualify the four-minute polygons, there are some limitations in regards to what is depicted in that, in that shape right now. So one of the things that this doesn't account for is turn delays. However, that is something that Rachel is looking into to see how that, that impacts the, the distance in which we can get to in four minutes. And so as a vehicle is approaching an intersection, we would have to slow down in order to make turns. So this, this, this conceptual simulation of how far we could get to does not incorporate turn delays, nor does it incorporate weather delays if there's snow or ice on the ground, nor does it incorporate any delays that are created from roadway construction, which we know right now during construction season is a real thing. So, so those are some things that, just to keep in mind that, that may be impacting actual performance versus conceptual performance. Another thing that this map assumes is that every station is available and every unit is available for response 24/7/365. That is not the case. So our, our department runs over 5,000 calls a year. And so what that means is as calls are occurring within our community, these shaded areas or these areas of our blanket, they change based on the availability of a resource. For example, looking at fire station two, which is across the street from Hy-Vee, that travel time polygon has kind of got a, a dark red and a lighter red shade. Well, when they respond to a call in their district, that portion of that blanket is no longer available because they are tied to an emergency call. If there's another call in that area, the next closest unit coming from another station would be responding into that area. And so this, this blanket of coverage is constantly dynamic based on what's happening within the community in real time. And so this is just a teaser for what's to come within our community risk assessment standards of cover work because we will be showing you in about nine months, actual performance relative to our standard of cover by looking at our last three years of data. So I wanted to share, to qualify this map as we're looking at these gaps, looking at actual performance relative to all of the things that are impacting our service delivery when we look towards making identifications of solutions. We will be identifying actual gaps against a target or a benchmark. So to tee up on the table on the right side, we've done some research with our comparable communities and Jamie was able to reach out and make contact with them. And, and so she's going to provide an update on those.
So with the NFPA standard 1710 being at four minutes, I really wanted to understand the departments that are not at that benchmark, why they were there and where they're looking to go in the future. So North Liberty currently doesn't have a benchmark. The reason for that is they're primarily a volunteer service and they respond to a lot of township calls. So they really don't have a way to accurately track that data in order to establish a benchmark. Johnston, Iowa, and speaking to the fire chief there, boys he fired up to be able to establish some benchmarks, that's something he's currently working on. Urbendale, six minutes actually has a departmental policy that requires their apparatus to come to a complete stop at every stop sign and stoplight once they're off major roadways, which I'm sure you can assume causes some delays. Ankeny established their benchmark approximately 20 years ago when they are primarily a volunteer force. They have transitioned mostly to career, so this is something that they're actively looking to pursue. And then Cedar Rapids established their benchmark in 1982. The NFPA standard was established in 2001, so this was prior to that standard of four minutes. And speaking to the leadership there, the reason they established that five minutes back then is they did a, a study for station location optimization and they decided five minutes was going to be the mark. They are currently today doing the same study and we can anticipate maybe a change to their benchmark in the future. While gathering this data and speaking to the fire chiefs at our comparable agencies, I can say that those that are not at the NFPA standard are actively engaged in it. And if four minutes should be their standard, they're addressing on how to get there. In an environment where time impacts outcomes and where seconds feel like minutes to someone facing an emergency, it is critical that we define a benchmark so that we as a department are able to strive for predictability, measure our performance against key performance indicators and make data-driven decisions to better enhance the services we provide.
So our recommendation to council is to adopt the travel time benchmark of the NFPA standard of four minutes. We've also included, as you, as you are aware, we are pursuing accredited status. This directly correlates with several performance indicators within the accreditation model. But just to give you an example of one of them, so this is a core competency category two criteria C, performance indicator five. The agency has identified the total response time components for delivery of services in each program area and found those services consistent and reliable within the entire response area. So with that's our recommendation of four minutes, but we would be happy to entertain any questions that you have for us and answer those. I will also add, there are other segments to total response time. We will be looking at those individually as well for gaps. For example, an alarm handling, a benchmark against what actual performance is there, turnout time, what a benchmark is there relative to performance gap as well, and then travel time. Ultimately, all of those impact our, our arrival to stop loss and to help save lives. So with that, what questions do you have?
Chief, I've got a question, but first I need to share with you, I, my friends at Google allowed me to do a little research on 1710 and I found this neat little benchmark and response objective site. So some of what you've just talked about, you've covered. And I shared copies of this with my colleagues here. Because as you just referenced, there's, you know, alarm answer alarm processing. And then there's turnout for fire and turnout for EMS. And I mean, so those are additional objectives and metrics that you can learn some things from. My big question is. You made a comment about basically response objective. Is, is kind of under ideal conditions, doesn't factor in the negative influence of rain, snow, et cetera. So I guess my question is, based on your understanding of NFP seventeen ten. Do they, do they have different standards for different environmental or weather related conditions? Or is this it and it's under ideal conditions? And if you're operating on less than ideal conditions, it is what it is.
The standard doesn't deviate from, from that. They do get into. The critical tasks and the resources needed based on risk category and classification. So for example, since you've printed off that, that guide, you'll see that there's different risk levels. A high risk fire response for the number of resources that would need to be needed to mitigate that. We're not getting into the travel time benchmark for an effective response for us for all of the arriving units tonight. That'll be something that we talk about in the future. But specifically, they don't get into a time of day, they don't get into weather or those things. That is a target that's based on optimizing the outcome.
Okay, all right. So I guess what it just amounts to is then that simplifies our application of this to some degree. Because we, we do have variable weather or other conditions.
It does. I would, I would also add that we always, so some, those delays are unavoidable. And even, you know, road construction, you know, we work closely with the engineering department and provide communications and. In order to, to navigate around certain road closures where there are roadway improvements that are, that are needing to happen. And, and frankly, if it wasn't for those roadway improvements, we would have roadway failures that would impact our ability to navigate. So absolutely, there's critical need that that needs to happen. But we work closely with them on, on how we do routing and ensure that we can get to our community.
Thank you.
See you.
Yeah, chief, ever since you've come on board, you've talked about being data driven. So this is obviously one of those very, very key elements and aspects of, of doing this. Strategic plan that you're trying to move forward with for your department. Do I understand this right? So what you're asking us tonight is to talk about a travel time benchmark. Do I understand it that you're going to continue to move forward to try to do a total response time benchmark as well?
So, I'm sorry.
Is that true or not?
Yes, we will be looking at all the segments of total response time. The reason specifically from a, from a policy standpoint or a, a formal direction from council. Is as we look at response reliability within different geographical areas of our community. We want to make sure that as we evaluate that in a geospatial environment. That as we model and travel time from our deployment areas, which is our fire stations, that we can do so against a target. We will be looking at total response time as well. For example, if total, if total response time is X and we, we will have benchmarks within each segment of that. As we evaluate each segment for performance gaps relative to that target. Ultimately, as we identify strategies, whether it's a process improvement. Or a future consideration for a resource need, those would all be pursued in order to keep total response time down.
So my understanding when you describe the GIS is the GIS when you talk about that, that it does not incorporate. Turns and corners and all of that, that the GIS is measured more as the crow flies? Instead of what is more accurate based upon real world conditions?
It doesn't incorporate the turn delays yet. We're working closely with Rachel and, and we will be able to do that and incorporate that into the community risk assessment standards. As we're moving into the future, but you will, you will be able to see actual historical performance in that study when it's completed as well. What percentage of the time are we hitting targets in certain areas of the community? Because as we look at that map that I shared this evening. It doesn't tell the total story, right? We don't have actual historical performance data embedded into that. That's why I needed to qualify that map with you, so you can see what it is representative of. But in the future, we're, we're working real closely with Rachel. She's going to be a, a critical partner as we create that report. And, you know, and, and connecting with her, she is going to be able to incorporate turn delays into, into that, into that analysis.
And of course, all of this collectively down the road is very instrumental in recommendations on where to locate our fire stations.
That's correct.
Very good. Love the direction you're going into. Thank you.
I just want to echo my colleagues and say I really appreciate this information and the thoughtfulness you have. Brought forward each and every time and welcome. I appreciate it. I'm not even the data person and I appreciate all of this. Back, back to the map slide. So anything that's not, so the green and the gold color. Those are, those are the under four minutes and right, so the closest to that, that's why. So it's just the colors on the outside that are.
That's correct. If there is a, a color other than white or gray. If all the assumptions being in place, everything's available, perfect weather, no turn delays, yes. Well, we, and so those mixed colors, like for example, the darker red to the west side of. Station two there, what that is, is an overlap. In coverage area at four minutes, which is a good thing, particularly in high density locations of call volume. Because what that assures is that if, if, for example, station two is tied up on a call. There still is a partial polygon covering at least a part of their response area. For example, as, as we move into the future and what's happened in, in some communities historically. Is they would design their standard of cover or, or their, their protection blanket bookended. Which really is a very siloed approach when looking and evaluating your risk. You really should consider some overlap to, to provide some, some resiliency to demand in order to assure. You're able to provide a consistent level of service. It's, I would compare it to, and I've used this analogy before, it's like water infrastructure. So you have plumbing, plumbing in place, but you also have to ensure that you have enough water. To provide the service level through the full infrastructure of the plumbing. Based on demand.
Even because that, that kind of, the next piece would be then, so as we look at our comprehensive plan and housing. Not only is it just the response time out, but it, it's what is within there that could require higher. Higher demand calls or where those calls are coming in from and how much they're crossing over, is that part of that next piece of science?
Yes, absolutely. So greater density and infill creates greater demand. So that doesn't, isn't reflected in actual performance when you were to look at a map like this. For example, if we were a community of a hundred thousand people in the same geographical space. That demand factor would be significantly different. And the holes in the blanket would be significantly different as well. So those are all factors as we evaluate our demand of services, the types of incidents that were going on. And our partnerships and how they, with other communities, how they were responding and to provide support to us. That all goes into the analysis as we look at our actual.
Thank you for that.
Anyone else? Okay, anything else from you?
Just if there's any further discussion or a consensus on direction for us to move forward with.
So we'll just ask if there's anybody, if anyone has any strong opposition. To what the chief is proposing. I think you have what you need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work. Next we have Carlene. With the direction, with the discussion and direction regarding. The art in the Central Plaza.
So good afternoon, excuse me. Today I will share with you the Central Plaza Sculpture Committee's choice for the plaza piece. Just to give you a little background of how we got to the selection, there's eight members very active in this committee. We did two calls for artists and we used the platform cafe, so we did a regional call. After we met together, looked at those submissions, decided that a nationwide call would be a better fit, so we did another call through that. With that second call, we had fifty nine submissions that each one of us went through individually score. The great thing is with using the cafe process, it analyzes all the scores, puts it all together for us and gives us that. Information of how artists rank. When we went through that, originally we as a committee had thought of sending out proposals for the top three artists. Well, our top six were so tight in score and great artists. And then it ended up being that artist number six, seven and eight had a tie score. So we asked eight artists to submit proposals back and that would be the pieces that they thought. Of their artwork would fit perfectly or well within the Central Plaza. We went back as a committee after we received those pieces, reviewed those. And I, I'm happy to say, and I'm, Sarah also is on that committee, that when we got together. I think we were all drawn to that same artist to begin with. There was a couple of other pieces that we liked and. Everyone submitted great pieces and they would fit in different places within the community, just not up in the Central Plaza. And before we wanted to bring any suggestions to you as council, we also wanted to hold a Zoom call. Because we had some questions on durability, vandalism, just some of the maintenance questions, which I will cover here. In a few minutes before we get to that next part. So the artists that we did select, and I will show you their, the actual piece here in a couple of minutes. We are, would like to work with Gavin and Kelly Broden, they're out of Los Angeles, California. They did submit five pieces options that are echoes of Marion. These four bullet points that they have were just ideas of the subject matter that they would like to incorporate into that piece. And as we look at that piece, which I will show here in a couple of minutes, I will explain some of the changes and ideas that we have already. As a committee have suggested for that. But before I show you the actual piece, I just want to do a reminder of where that pieces will be located. That sculpture will be in that northeast corner, kind of an entry piece into the park. Not too far from our sculpture or our statue piece that we have. So drum roll, like I said, they submitted five pieces all called echoes of Marion. The committee has chosen option number five. Which this sculpture will be eleven feet in height, a width of seven feet, six inches and also a depth of seven feet, six inches. It's constructed with a three sixteen L stainless steel, which is a marine grade stainless steel product. That they will add a dark graphite PVD coating, which is a thin layer of filming that. Is a solid material that they vaporize in a vacuum system and it gets adhered to the stainless steel product. And one thing when we were meeting or the Zoom call with Kelly and Gavin was we were. Discussing on the durability, as I said before, but the graffiti and we want this piece to be interactive. So a couple of questions we had was if we have people wanting to take photos, can they stand on it, can they sit in it? And those are some areas that we were concerned and they were with the original finish that I just explained to you. There was said like, you know, if someone sat on it, if they had rivets in their jeans, it would scratch. So Sarah isn't even aware of this yet because this was information I just found out late yesterday. Was they will be able to actually do that PVC coating that we, PVD coating that we talked about. But then they will do a natural hammered finish on that bottom with a brushed in finish. So it'll have a little bit different texture on that bottom, but it'll help protect for that. The other question that we had for Kelly and Gavin was graffiti. If someone would come and spray graffiti, how would that finish uphold to that? The product that they recommended, they said graffiti would be really hard to get off of that. After going back and I was talking to Seth and then we. I also mentioned it to Drew, who is one of our park supervisors, we actually within our park system use. A product from Rain Guard called anti graffiti product that we adhere on to that. So reached out back to the artists, suggested this product. They researched it, they're actually going to be meeting with a representative from that company this week. They want to test it on some of their sample prop that they have to make sure, but they. Said it sounds like it'd be a great idea so we can go back to the original finish that we wanted to have. They are saying this piece will have a life of at least twenty five plus years. A very simple maintenance, ten year maintenance program that they will submit for us. But they said the upkeep for it will be very, very minimal and very easy. So that was a great thing. As far as the lighting, there'll be lighting, which will be interior, so you can either have uplighting. It could be a nice, natural, warm glow light. There's also the option of changing the light fixture features so that they could be multi color, so like what we have in the alleyway. Where they could change colors. Another option, just when we were through that Zoom call was when we get to where placement in the park. If there's a light pole close by and we can act, add an accent light from up above, that, that lighting would also shine through. Could make different like designs on the ground, depending how we end up putting that or which base we have. So going back to the piece and talking about the images that we had talked about. We as a committee went back and said, we want to stay more with nature's focus. So we want to look at Marion has the Marnark research, so adding butterflies, we are a bird friendly city. Birds, we're a tree city USA, so trees, wildflowers, dragonflies. More of that nature, wildlife and plant material is what we'd like to see more into that. Just speaking with them and then also in the proposal, any of these designs that were in this sculpture. We can go back and change, ask for something different, come up with a, a completely different interior product of what we have. One thing as a committee, and this will be some discussion that you may have, is. We had talked about removing the train, especially on the very bottom one, it's a different model that we have. We had talked about maybe pulling that completely out, being that the depot is already in the park. And then we also have Draper Park that is railroad history. So that is another option of, of either we incorporate that back in or back out. But we want to look more at, like I said, more of that natural plant life and guys chasing and animals. So how does it fit into the park? So right now they're showing it, the sculpture more facing out to Seventh Avenue. Couple of things we want to do as a committee was we wanted it to be interactive, as I said, so we want it to be photo ops. People be able to take your family or you as yourself, go in and look at the different pictures and like if I would bring my grandsons, have them. Different little images that they would find. So we wanted it to be really interactive. One great thing, and Sarah, you can chime in on this one if you like, but Sarah was talking about. Having it, if we position it instead of going facing the avenue is if we tilt it a little bit and it's more of a framing. So whether you're standing on the corner of Seventh Avenue across the street and you look through this sculpture. And you can see the depot or our focal point on that side. Or is it something when you're on the depot side and you're looking across the park? It's vocalized or it's framing something that's across the street. So that's one reason we really liked that interactive piece. We wanted a piece that would showcase Marion. And when people see it, they'll be like, oh, that's great, that's Marion. We also liked this feature was, one, it's a showcase piece, but it also looks and blends in like it belongs there. It's more of a natural, like we talked about those things, but also natural colors. So it's, that's one of the reasons we really liked that. Also the circular because of the loop from the ice arena or the ice loop that we have, so kind of just mirroring and putting everything together. So the last thing would be kind of our timeline. So we're hoping that we'll get direction from council to work on that contract, interim contract with them. I know this is a really tight timeline. I did speak with Kara today, so she is aware of that and would help with that. They'll work on those drawings, like we said, when we go back and change those images that it will be laser cut into that. And then they will also be sending us a mock little handheld model, so we will be able to hold it, look at it. See how it's actually going to look three dimensional. And then you can see where how they'll be engineering, fabricating it, getting it shipped out to us. With insulation, they wanted to do the first week of March, but we all know what the weather's like in March, so we may have a beautiful. First week or we may have, you know, five feet of snow. I'm not, you know, sure, but we know it changes daily and, and here. So that is our recommendation. I don't know, Sarah, if you have anything you want to add before I open it up for questions?
I think the, I mean, the only other piece we had discussed in some of the questions we had with the artists and. I was very impressed with the artists. I mean, the first part of the regional thing was do people know our area, are they, you know. Working with us and the conversations we can have with them. And they were just phenomenal. I mean, they got in this call and you, and you felt like, oh, we're friends, like this is great. But the other question we came up with was we know that people will sit. Like they're, they're going to sit on the area around it, they're going to hang out in the park, if it's raised at all. So we're like, what does that platform look like? You saw in the one example, they had it, it was kind of, there's a sunk down area and there was rock around it. They've done everything from rock to water to solid. They said it's really up with us that we're working with. And we're like, well, we probably don't want water because if people, I mean, as much as it looks really cool. People are going to be going through that and they're going to want to stand by this with pictures, so we probably can't do that. So they really left a lot of those options and pieces on the base, what that looks like. We kind of left it with something more like this because we figured people will sit like it's a bench. Or they, if they're getting up and off, up and down, or if it's super low, it may have to be more like a foot high. So that people can easily get up and down off of there if they wanted to take pictures. so that people can easily get up and down off of there if they wanted to take pictures. And like I said, we just anticipate people will want to touch and be close and take their pictures. It's just a natural thing when you see it that they're going to want to feel it and see what that is like. And that was a big critical discussion we had with designers as we asked questions on all of these pieces. But this one, this, these artists rose to the top of those pretty quickly when we saw what, what had come back. So we hope you all like it. And I think there's a lot of potential with it. And it's a very fun, clean, utter, but natural.
So, so what are you looking for?
So we are looking for direction from council that we can go begin that process of entering into a contract with Kelly and Gavin. And then we would bring that back in that last September council meeting for approval of the sculpture of the contract and they will begin work right away.
Any questions?
Yes. Yeah. So just to clarify, with the three areas of focus that were originally there for the art, we're only doing the nature pieces now of that, right?
Right. So we're going to, we're going to make it so it's more natural. So yes, nature minded, what is here in Marion.
You know, I, yeah, I like the piece. I like the, I like the light, lighted up aspect. It reminds me of the journalism school at Iowa. We had a metal piece and the lights reflected and had all these like numerals and letters. And the shadows make that go out and imprint on the concrete. So it reminds me of that. It's like same color, same lighting scheme as that picture. And I think that's really cool. And it's really memorable. And it was a huge photo spot on campus. So.
What we're hoping for.
Steve. Oh, yeah. I like the piece. I like some of the changes you made and how you were going to decorate it or have it laser cut it. So I think those changes in that direction is good. What is the spacing, out of curiosity, between this piece and our Civil War statue?
I know when we gave them the parameters, we told them that it couldn't go any farther than, I thought it was 12 feet wide is what we came through. Seth might be able to answer that one just a little bit better.
Yeah, the Civil War statue will be taller, but this is wider.
But I mean, I'm talking about the space. I don't want it to look like we got everything cluttered in one corner.
Yeah. So this is on one side of the.
Yeah. Yeah, keep going. There we go.
Yeah, but a Civil War statue is right up there. It's west of it, but.
Yeah, it's about, it's west of it for about 40, 50 feet. So.
Oh, it's got, oh, at least that. Okay.
Yeah.
I think, yeah. This? I don't even know how to use it. Seth?
Yeah, I just go, I just wanted to make sure they weren't looking too cluttered in that corner. So.
Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah. So back to the site map, one of the other features of the, the park is the lovely utility boxes that are in that relative area. And so I'm just wondering if it's been sort of discerned whether or not those utility boxes are going to detract from the visual of this particular piece of art. Yeah. And our friends at Google showed that quite well on their map. I just am concerned, I've, I've had a longstanding concern about those utility boxes because they just, only in the eyes of an electrical engineer are they a thing of beauty. Just saying.
Yeah. So all those utility boxes will sit just on the west side of the trail here, next to the Civil War statue. And so everything we're talking about is going to be about 30 to 40 feet, just based on the scale here from those.
Well, I just, I'm just concerned about the, you know, the congestion of those boxes coupled with the artwork and all. But I just wanted to draw that.
Yeah, absolutely. And there's going to be a lot of things that will soften it because we'll have beds all within this space, including in all light poles that we have on here. It's going to be hanging baskets. So even though there's going to be a lot of aesthetics that will take, take away from those electrical boxes where it's just kind of, you won't even notice them.
Yeah. It's an, that's an immovable conflict. I just know that. Okay. The, the only other thing that I had is, and I, I know Gage mentioned this, the reduction of the design elements. I don't know. I really, when I was looking at the detail of the depiction, I really did like the fact that there was a locomotive there, although it was Union Pacific and not Milwaukee Road, but a subtlety.
Correct. And I know today when I was talking to Seth and Brent about, you know, some of the different, that was the first thing Seth said is why would you pull the train out? Maybe, you know, put the right component in or a little bit of train track or something. So getting some of that back into it. But I just want to, before anybody else asks any questions, reiterate what Sarah said, how great they're going, they would be to work with. As soon as she said, like, as soon as we got on the Zoom call with them, you felt like they were friends and they were very receptive to what we had to say. They want it to be our piece, personalize it. If they are granted, they want us to do some videos within that area so they can see the ground and what is around them to help us put it where it should be, how it should frame. So I think they'll be, they'll be great to work with.
Anyone else? Yes.
First of all, I just want to say what I, I think this is exciting. What a great piece. I was hoping we might be able to bring in a couple of those palm trees with it, but I, I suppose we can't get that put in there. But as we take a look at, and I'm sure the committee has also talked about this as well too, but what concerns me the most also too about the uptown area there is, is if we do have a raised bed for this where it's going to be somewhat of a planter style like this, is, is putting up those skateboard deterrents so that we don't have any of that destruction like we've seen in our fire pits and in our benches up in the, you know, common areas there, because that would be a huge issue there for skateboarding around in there. But I think this is super exciting. So congratulations on the, coming down to the, the final selection.
Thank you. And just real quick on that base, they show it as, we have it here, but they've also said that if we wanted to, we could, you know, just have the footings and it's on natural. It's right there in the grass with just a little bit around it. Couple of ideas we had talked about was, you know, we do have it at ground level. And then we bring in some limestone, those blocks, piece it around a little bit. So that could be a seat, a sitting place, but then you're right up there being able, so that would maybe be an idea of deterring. So that was one thing they want to work with us on and get more ideas from the park on what we actually do for that bottom base.
Right. How many total designs were there? And then how did you guys decide on like picking this specific one?
So after our initial, the 59 artists, then we went back and we asked eight artists to submit pieces. Kelly and Gavin actually did five pieces with the same theme. The rest of them each did a different piece of artwork. So we each individually looked at the art piece, how we interpreted it that would fit into the park. Originally, we had talked about, we wanted something colorful and bright and interacting. And when we saw some of the pieces that came back, there were a couple of pieces that were very colorful. The interacting wasn't quite as much. And then as we're looking at it, we're realizing that it's not actually a piece that would fit into this. You know, we want it to be, as I said earlier, as we want it to be a focal point, but we want it to look like it blends in and it fits and it all marriages together. So one thing we said was this looked like a wedding band that kind of was bent a little bit. So it marriages into that whole park system. So that's what we did is we went back through, each one of us took those eight submissions, looked through them. We got together, started discussing the pieces and right away, the first thing is, is there any pieces that you feel would not be a fit? And we right away eliminated, I want to say at least four of those pieces. So then we were down to, you know, we had four other artists. And then we started looking at, this piece reminds me of something that we have at Lau Park. This would be a great piece at Lau Park, or this would be a great piece at Thomas Park. We were all drawn to the, this artist. So when we looked at those pieces and we wanted more of that natural and not that bright colors, it was, it was unanimous. It was just as you start talking and thinking those things out. So actually for us, and Sarah said the same thing, it was an easier process than what I actually thought it would be when we got to the final, final eight artists.
And I can jump in here. So the original, which was the original, the second round, we went to the national call. And we got all of those in. We each had two weeks and we went through everyone. And the artists had submitted a write-up of what they envisioned, what they thought about our community, a little about them, some other samples of their designs. And then we scored them. They kept it very simple, like me. It was one, two, or three. Like yes, maybe no. That was, that was it. One, two, or three. And so we all submitted those electronically. And then it populated it back and we met and they're like, okay, here's, we were going to cut off at five. Well, it ended up being like eight. So then we could go back out. And then we sat down together with that and went through it again. So it started with everybody scoring on their own and then coming back together after it was a pretty definitive eight. And then it dropped, dropped off from there, from that.
Then, and then this artist had multiple designs as well, right?
And then this artist had the five, but we only scored like the artist. So we didn't score five for this one. It was just like, it was them. And this is, you're kind of looking at their, you got a very good feel for what that artist did in their, in their work. Some were these very colorful, animated, almost cartoonish type of structures. And we're like, that's, that's great, but that's not really a fit into the kind of the natural environment or where we're at. This is a cool thing, but this isn't going to fit real well with everything else happening. So we didn't, and then once we got together, then the group together went through. Once we kind of determined we liked this work of this artist, the best, again, like four of them fell off once we saw their submissions after we came back. Then, because, sorry, we scored them, went back to them and said, you're a finalist, send us your work. They sent us some work and we were like, and it dropped it off right away. There's four and four. So the four we were really looking at, this would have been considered one. And we then went through and we were like, this is the one. We like this better than the others. And it wasn't unanimous. We talked through a few pieces with it and, and got to, we like this artist. If we think we can work with them, we're not really sure. They looked very city and it was very sleek. And we were like, okay, if that works. But then within that group, let's talk about of the five designs. Well, there was a couple. We were like, nope, nope, that's not, that isn't really fit. This doesn't fit. We got down to two of them. We went back and forth a little bit. And this was the one that came forward. And then after we talked to the artists, it kind of moved forward from there. So it was, it was a little bit of, it was scoring, tweeted out. And then it was just some conversation through what could we change? What couldn't we? How would we adjust that? What does the base look like? Can it be, is it going to be hot? Is it going to be like the old slides that people my age grew up with that just burned, burned your pieces every time you tried to slide down them? And you don't talk about, Grant, the playgrounds of, the playgrounds of old. And then would it be sharp? How would, how do we, would we make it interactive for kids? How could we tell the story of Marion? Can people stand on it? We want it to be a picture piece. You know, we're, we're Americans. We're, we're touchers of things. We like to, you know, they're going, people are going to be near it. Does that work? So then it became apparent once they said yes. And, and the, and the staff did a great job of working through our questions with them on things I'm not going to deal with, which is understanding finishes and all those pieces that I just rely on people a lot smarter than myself to come back with those options.
Anything else? Right?
Yeah. So back to your commentary, Karolina, just about, there's some adjustments relative to the finishes and the texture of the, of the, of the piece, all to, I guess, help mitigate any damage just by touch, feel that people are going to apply to this. I have a different question. It really more applies to the, to the entire area. Is this going to be under any kind of video surveillance 24/7? I, you know, because I've seen the damage to the, to the, our tables up there. And it just, I mean, the community has invested just a huge amount of time, effort and heart and soul to define our new uptown. And it just really worries me that there are just going to be people who don't have a natural respect for what the community has invested.
So there's a camera there now. This perspective is pretty good because basically right behind this camera, there's, there's a, for this view, there's a camera on the pole that sees this exact view right now. And then in the future, when we get the plaza built out, there'll be cameras all around. It'll get 360 coverage of that.
Okay. All right. That takes care of that concern. Thank you.
Anybody else with questions? I, I mean, I think it's a beautiful piece. I, I think we did the right thing by going back and opening it up to expand the pool to the maximum to make sure we, we have, we have a broader pool of entries. And as far as giving direction, I don't know how to do that because we don't know what we haven't seen. So I mean, to me, that my, just my, my slight hesitation with all of this is, you know, we have one option to choose from to say, yes, we like it or not. And we haven't seen, or a couple of us have, have informally seen them. But I think as a council, and I'm glad that, you know, we had one council member on it. In hindsight, maybe we should have had another council member on this, just, just for future, for process. I think everybody knows I'm big on process. And, but we maybe, maybe in the future, we have at least one more council member. We can't have four, but at least one more on, on a committee like this where the council is being asked to make a selection. And because like I said, we don't know what, we don't know what else, what the others are, what we haven't seen. But I, I think what I'm hearing is there's a consensus that this will, this is, everybody is happy with this one, right? Anybody who's not happy with this, would like to see something, other options? Or I think everybody's happy with this selection. And I want to thank the committee for their, for their work and all the diligence that they did. So I, I see you have something. I see you have something. So go ahead.
And something we can do as a follow-up is during this whole process, we can circle back with council because there is from the timelines, they will, they will need to make some changes, submit drawings. And so we can definitely keep council informed on those, on those changes and, and get direction to proceed. Because we really, we truly want to make this our, our piece and not just something that just the committee selected. So.
Was that what you were going to say?
Mary, you and I share a brain. We've talked about that. So I had a note for staff meeting tomorrow to talk about exactly what you brought up about the process for committees. But then Seth also covered the point that, to, to go through and make sure that as they're making progress with the, the design, that council is able to see it as it's developing and give some input in the process as well.
I think that's important because ultimately, you know, I mean, you can't, you're never going to get 43,000 people to like one piece of art. We saw that with the branding, you know, everything that we've done, you know, there's always people, it's just a matter of personal taste, artists. And so I think you just have to, I think what you went through of, of making sure that it's, it's reflective of the community and things that we want to portray. I think, you know, that was a good, a good way to go through the decision-making. But ultimately, you know, we have to be able to answer the community when they say, why did you pick that? So I think the more involvement, you know, just along the way is, I think is, is better because we have more, you know, knowledge and information to share as to how it came about. But I do, I, I don't want to diminish the work of the committee because, you know, it took a lot of time. And, and I know that these, everyone certainly is qualified or more than any of us to, to make this election and a lot of work went into it. And we really appreciate the time and effort. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Mike.
Yep. Mine's not pretty art. I'm going to talk about garbage.
All right. So we're bringing back the, the conversation about the automated garbage, which obviously impacts all of our residents and the new timeline that we're working off of. So since the last time I've been up here, we have had the residents all pick their preferred cart sizes. Some of those are still changing and we're still getting phone calls on switching from large to small and small to large. I'm sure we'll have that for a little while. This week, we're going to cut that off. Then we actually had a meeting today with the company that's making the carts to talk about how they're going to have the semis come, assemble everything and then start distributing them out. So we wanted to give this update. So it was very timely. As many of the council members are aware, we've had these at several farmers markets so that people can touch, feel, see what size they are, even if it was in the rain and we only had a couple of customers that day. So the sticker, the, the carts are ordered, uh, the sticker designed, so what you see here is actually gonna be on the recycling container. So they call it an I M L and basically in the mold, this gets placed, so that's on the top of the, and I believe Amber gave you all the packets, so you can see it as well, um, cause it's kinda small to see on the screen. Um, with our trucks, we've had week, every two weeks, we're meeting with our, uh, suppliers of the trucks. Originally, they were supposed to be here in July with some issues between the chassis and the cab, they're now gonna be here. Between October first and fourteenth, so there's like the first week we get two of them and then we get one and then two, but they can't. And we'll go through those details here in a second. Um, so in the meantime, we're gonna, we have contingency plans, um, to keep going. Um, and we're gonna continue to have check-ins with our supplier to make sure that they are going to stay on track. Um, we're working with G I S Rachel to get the routes figured out. Um, and then basically the, the big date is October fourteenth is when the residents will actually wheel out their new carts and we will pick them up with the new trucks. Um, but I'm gonna go through some of the timeline now as we go there, but October fourteenth is the big day. Um, so here in August, um, we're gonna get some loaner trucks from our truck supplier so that our guys can go out there and start learning how to run the equipment. Cause obviously before they were throwing garbage into a truck, now they gotta use some joysticks, grab that container and make sure they're pushing the right button so that it goes on the right side of the hopper, whether it's garbage or recycling. Um, so we can get them practicing on those, kind of build a, a little, um, practice route, kinda like we do with a rodeo. You know, park some things in front of it and see how good you can do. Um, but get them proficient at that with those, uh, temporary trucks that we have. In the meantime, uh, they've already started making the containers for us. Um, we're also gonna ramp up communications, there's gonna be a big one that comes out right after Labor Day. And it has two or three pages of information just on automation. Um, because we're gonna guess the biggest question that we're gonna get because people, there's gonna be some people that for about four weeks, they're gonna have the new containers and they're gonna have their existing containers and they have to continue to use their existing containers. So that's gonna be our biggest message that we're gonna have to get out there. So we're gonna have to start ramping up, being at farmer's markets and stuff and getting that word out there.
Did you say four weeks?
Four weeks, some, not everybody, but some will have the both containers for four weeks. Cause that's how long it takes to distribute all those containers to everybody. Um, so that'll be a lot of that and then there's about eighteen hundred people in Marion where their collection day will change. So if they were a Thursday, they might be a Friday, but their day is gonna change. And for a lot of them, the time might change, but that's just gonna depend on the route. So they might be used to being picked up at ten o'clock and now it's gonna be in the afternoon or something. So that's gonna vary for quite a few of them, but the day change is a, a big deal. If they're used to always having, for me, it's Thursday, if it doesn't stay on Thursday, then it's just gonna be a change of habit. Um, so that's kinda August, looking at those dates, any questions before I go on?
Questions?
So we look at September, so again, we have thirteen thousand, um, residents, households that we're sending these out to, so there's the packet that you have in front of you. So we're gonna get some volunteer groups to put those together. Um, early September, the Marion Messenger is gonna come out. Um, and then those that, the eighteen hundred that the, they actually have their day changed. So if they change days, we're actually gonna do a direct mailing to those just to help make sure they realize that their day is gonna change on the fourteenth. We're looking for volunteers for the Marion Parade, if you wanna, um, dress up as Oscar the Grouch and get in a garbage container.
Why are you looking at me, Ken?
And then obviously the fall Mar- Marion Market Booth, cause again, um, we'll have to start getting people pumped cause again, they're gonna get this cart delivered and then they're gonna have to hold on to it for a little while. So it's gonna be hard for them not to use the new cart, so it's, that's the big communication piece that we're gonna have to get there. Um, and then we're gonna have to amend our ordinances to, um, go with the new style instead of throwing at the forty pound limit, things like that. We're gonna have to change the ordinance to match what we're doing with the new automated system. Um, so we'll have to bring that to city council, have three readings to change that ordinance and any policies and procedures. Uh, we will also do an audit on house pickups. So Matt, I think you said we had eighty? About eighty houses that we actually go up to the front door and pick up their garbage and take it to the, the truck um, for disabilities or, um, whatever the case may be for those individuals. So doing an audit on that. The vendor that's bringing, put, putting together the toter carts and then assembling them are gonna work seven days a week. And they're gonna work six or seven A M to six or seven at night, seven days a week. So they know that we do have a noise ordinance, so they're gonna actually operate out of our old public service facility. We're gonna be moved into the new one. They're gonna use that as their staging ground and then they know that we have a noise ordinance between ten P M and seven A M. So the deliveries won't happen outside of that window. But then they'll start mapping that out. Um, but the vendor will begin household delivery September eleventh through October ninth, uh, just be staged. But that's where some will get it four weeks ahead of time. Any questions on September?
You have a question, Sarah?
This is an old, this is an old question, but just remind me what happened, what people can do with their old containers.
Yep, and that'll be another big question we get. So, um, they can reuse them in a different way if they want to. So for example, if they wanna use it for pop cans or glass or, um, yard waste, either take it to the, the compost area or to get compost and bring it back, so they can use it, any of those. We're also working to have a company that will actually recycle their actual recycling containers. More than likely, most of the garbage containers, you know, the menardge ones, you're just gonna have to toss those cause they're gonna be busted up and damaged. But they, they should fit and if they had got the big one, it probably just would fit in the, the new one, they could just get rid of it. The recycling one, that's what we're gonna have to figure out, we're probably gonna have to do a combination of a roll-off container at the drop-off facility that they could bring it physically and drop it off. Some we may have to pick up, that we have to figure out yet, all those details.
So as we're communicating these other pieces, I know that's a big question, we'll be able to also have like a, what do I do with my old?
Yeah, and I can tell you, even when they were trying to pick out the sizes of their new containers, that was some of the questions that they were already asking is, well, what do I do with my old ones? But yeah, since we, we have that four-week lag for some, that's the thing is, it would have been, I, you know, but we can't run both systems at the same time.
We're making them into gardens.
That's what I'm doing.
That's what he's doing.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, anything else? Any other questions?
Okay, so then we go to October. So truck deliveries, October one through fourteen, so that's where we get two trucks the first week and then a truck the next week and then two trucks the next week. And it has to go through a post-inspection and make sure everything's good to go after it drives out of the factory. And then they're in Canada, so then they gotta figure out how are they gonna get them from Canada to Marion. So, um, make sure they don't get, um, caught at the border and the Canadians release them. Um, so the deadline for the cart delivery to the residents in the contract is October ninth. That way everyone has them ready to go on the fourteenth. Communications is gonna be ongoing. Um, so, uh, and then we'll have the final ordinance reading and adoption of policies and procedures. Like we said, the start of the automated collection will be October fourteenth. And then we will start beginning, uh, collection of data, measuring success. Where do we need to modify things? Um, and then in the packet, there's, and I think you guys have all this again. So we made it big, do not use until the week of October fourteenth. We know people still will, we'll have to work through that. Um, but we'll have, uh, all these put together and then they'll attach them to the recycling container when they deliver them. Um, something even that we talked about today is the way that they deliver the carts. Maybe not in the same day, would it vary, but let's say at my house, they might deliver my garbage can at nine A M. But I may not get my recycling container until the afternoon, cause it's a different truck. And then if I had a yard waste, it may come later. And so that's more communication that we talk through with them. And again, as we get that plan together, we'll work with Amber, get all that information out. Um, they also told us to make sure that the police department knows about this because a lot of people, um, claim that, you know, it's, there's these random people out in my yard while they're delivering carts. But, so it was good to have that conversation of, uh, what they've seen in other municipalities when they've implemented this. So trying to give them a lot of information without overbearing the information. Um, but this is our plan to move forward.
Okay.
Any questions?
Just a quick one, so are we for certain going to be able to take back and recycle? Or reuse or do something with the blue recycle bins? Is that for certain, but we just don't know the, the timing or logistics yet? I understand the old ones are different materials, I've gone through some of that, uh, Q and A and stuff like that. But I just wanna make very clear as we start going to farmer's markets, that we know how to respond to them.
Yeah, so the, the old blue ones, we are able to recycle those. I've already worked, um, with, uh, U F P Industries out of Tipton. We've already worked that part out, they're more the, the, what we don't know, I guess, is when and how, I guess. They said they would provide us with empty trailers, semi-trailers to wherever we need them. And then if it's just Saturday afternoons when our, or Saturday, Tuesday afternoons, people wanna bring them in, we can stack them in their trailers and then when them trailers are full, they would come get them. So we really wouldn't have to do nothing, just stack them in their trailers, but they will take them. I've sent them pictures, been in contact with them. They recycle them into little pellets, then they make them into a new product.
I thi- I think that's gonna be one of the most, one of the most popular questions is what to do with the old and, you know, the garbage cans versus the recycling. So as soon as we can be extremely clear on that and what to do with them, I think it'll be good for everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, October fourteen. This is a very complex transition from old system to new system. Lot of moving parts, lot of variables, a lot of risk elements. And so my question is, does October fourteen, what, does that milestone date accommodate any of the known risk elements that you're analyzing for in terms of what could jump track? And maybe, let me rephrase the question. What, in the total work effort that you're facing now, what could degrade our ability to meet October fourteen?
So for example, let's say that our trucks do get slowed down and we don't get our actual trucks. We're working with the truck supplier, so if we have to use loaner trucks, we're gonna use loaner trucks and they've committed that they're gonna allow us to use loaner trucks. Cause obviously if we have these all distributed, we can't lift these up.
Right.
So it may be something where it's a little different, where instead of a split hopper like we have now that takes garbage and recycling, it might be a single hopper and then we have three trucks driving down the street, so one for garbage, one for recycling, one for yard waste. So we've already kinda come up with the contingency plans that may happen. Um, so we've got commitments from, and that's why we met today with the, the people that are distributing the carts, so they know what their deadline is. That's why they wanted to work more hours, they wanted to use our facility. We're making everything that we can to make sure that we meet this deadline. We have meetings with the, the truck suppliers over two weeks.
Well, I, so your comments, um, you, you sense the same thing I do. The minute we publicize October fourteenth, um, that we gotta do that. I mean, however we do it, we've gotta meet that commitment to the community. So I, I'll tell you what, I just applaud all of you for the work that has gone into planning this transition. This is like huge and I just really, really, uh, thank all of you for that work.
A giant group effort.
Anyone else? Oh, go ahead.
I had a quick question, um, I've seen it here on this one here and I think this might be the only one I've seen. But you know, there was another city that talked about putting your, your bins a wiener dog in distance between each other. We haven't talked a lot about the spacing that it needs between each receptacle and then how far back from the curb. I, I see it here, but are we doing anything in the mailings? Um, so that we, we hit this right the first time where people are, you know, coming in in October, it's just beginning of the snow season again. So, um, just wanna make sure there was clarity around where they need to be and the distance in between. They can't be on the right of way, they gotta be in the driveway or, you know, got some places that don't have sidewalks, don't have driveways. They're gonna be putting them in the right of way. I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page on that as well. Like, I know that one is commonly comes up to me, um, at the park. Um, with that question, I, I don't know if I'm telling them the right answer or not.
Right, so three feet is ideal and it, it should be in the F A Q, so, um, it's right there. And then there should be in the, the, the F A Q that's running out with that mailer, it should be in there as well. Um, so three feet is ideal so that we have room to get the arm around. But I can tell you, as our guys get better at it, they won't need the three feet. I, I see it in Cedar Rapids where they put them right next to one, one another, so that's, that's ideal is to do that. And our guys will get better and better. As far as where they're putting them, uh, we're gonna have to, there's information in there, but yeah, we want it on a flat level surface. So if their driveway is too steep, we may not wanna put them in the driveway, they may have to actually go in the curb line. But I've seen them sitting in bike lanes in other municipalities as well, just cause that's, you know, they might have a really steep front yard and there's nowhere to put it. And they have a one-stall lane that drives up and they gotta be able to get in and out, so they just stick it in the bike lane.
That was exactly my comment, or my thought as well too, cause you know, you gotta, what, two and a half foot container, you need three feet. And if you got two containers, you ain't got an eight-foot driveway, I mean, it's, it consumes their entire apron, you know, in the driveway. So I just wanted to, I, but I knew the answers to that, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page of making. I mean, ultimately, it just needs to be getting to the spot where the driver can have access to it and, and do it from the controls of the, of the driver's seat of the truck, so that's what I was looking for, so.
Yep, and we are, the next, uh, no parking area that we bring back to city council will be all cul-de-sacs. Because those themselves, even now, we have to make multi-point turns to get around them. And if there's a car parked there, that makes it even harder to make sure that we're lined up to pick that up, let alone try and get around the cul-de-sac.
What is the reach from those? I know there's a distance, do you know what that mechanical reach is? Uh, from the apparatus to where its lift point is?
Twelve feet.
It is twelve. Okay, thank you. I just leave it in the garage?
Any other? Any other questions? Anything else, Mike?
Unless there's other questions.
No, I mean.
Amber's looking for volunteers to put together packets, so.
Okay.
We could do it at a meeting, all of us worked on it.
Certainly, the, the anticipation is really building up in the community. People ask all the time, you know, when are we gonna get our containers, when are we, you know, it's just a constant question, there's a lot of anticipation. I think people are looking forward to it for the most part and their.
Amber kinda held back a little bit and then focused last week, cause we didn't wanna get ahead of council.
Yeah.
Um, but we can start releasing some of these dates so they know.
Sure. Thanks for all the work.
Mayor, if I can, um, I've been involved in implementations like this in other communities. It's a very complex, as, as you talked about, this touches pretty much every home, every resident in our community. This is a tremendous amount of work by the team to get to this point. Been very proud of how proactive we've been in the conversation with the council, with the community, the timelines, the communication. Inevitably, there's gonna be some hiccups along the way. Um, and just, our focus is to reach higher in the delivery of customer service and this is no different. And so as we roll this out and if we, and when, if and when, we do, um, experience some hiccups. We just ask for patience. We just ask for patience and grace and we will do, I mean, we really do a great job uh, with Amber and the rest of our team. You know, with the assistance from fire and police and our other communication outlets to really try to maximize our reach to our residents. So we will, we will just um, go as aggressive as we can to make sure that this is reached. Uh, you know, far-reaching, even as we're experiencing hiccups and, you know, bestly, um, you know, the best laid plans of mice and mine often go awry. And, you know, that's, we, we hope to avoid hiccups. But, you know, we do have to anticipate some of them. Um, you know, different, different layouts, the driveways, things like that. Uh, different behaviors, people are gonna get used to it. Um, so we do ask for the community's patience and understanding as we, we do this. We are trying to work on their behalf um, to the best of our ability. So.
Mike, is there any possibility that October fourteenth date gets delayed at all? Like, or we can tell people October fourteen?
We are not planning on moving that date. Now if.
I mean, is there any chance in the, any, like, that it could get delayed for some reason or?
If the D-word comes to town or something, but otherwise, no.
Will these uh, the paperwork, the packets frequently ask questions, when, will they be posted throughout the city? At library, city hall, maybe Walmart or IV on a stand or something?
Yeah, I can work with Amber and see where all we can.
She's shaking her head and back there, yeah, so. Okay, cool.
Yes. So back to the mayor's question, which was the substance of what I was talking about a few minutes ago. I'm asking this from a project structure standpoint and you, you all have evaluated what your risk profile are. It is for any element of, of effort along that timeline. Does it make any sense to move from October fourteenth, move out to say a week later? Just to ha- have that capacity to, you know, there, there are known unknowns and there are unknown unknowns to, you know, that emergent risk that fundamentally just wasn't contemplated or is unable to be mitigated through any means, does, does it change by one week? Enhance our uh, our certainty of performance against that critical milestone?
Can, councilman, can I, can I ask this in a different way?
Sure.
Because I think this might.
You're gonna de-grantify.
No, no, I, just, um, so Mike, when the team has been going through and established the Oc- October fourteenth date, have you built in buffer time to account for any, any hiccups along the way?
Yes, with constant checkups with everyone. So even the people that are distributing the carts, they're giving us a daily log of this is how many we got done. So we're gonna be able to see, is that going how it's supposed to be? With them putting in that sort of effort and talked with them today, how many crews they have, how many people they have coming to do that, to deliver, um, knowing that we have the contingency for the trucks. We talked about it as a group and we, if we keep pushing it, we're gonna be in the snow season and we really don't wanna do that.
Right. Well, I guess, I, I give, give that, give that question one additional round of scrutiny by the composite team. And it wouldn't break my heart if you wanted to, you know, go a, a week later. I'm just, all I know is, I, I've been somewhat in your shoes before, Mike, on this, on something like this. And it, I've, I've had my heart broken a, a few too many times up against a, a hard deck milestone of, of performance. So analyzing, you guys are in the weeds on it. I'm just saying, if that's absolutely necessary for, for uh, confidence, um, I don't know that anybody's gonna be upset about that. Three weeks, four weeks would be problematic because of whether one week i- is not. I, anyhow.
Yeah, and we can, Grant, we can talk more as a team, we can talk more about that uh, tomorrow as well. But I, I just wanted to add, we did give the cart delivery a week buffer. So, you know, we set the October ninth date that everybody has their cart. So that way we have time to adjust, change, whatever it is. So we've got that week buffer already. And then with the vehicles, the trucks, knowing that we've got four vehicles if we need them from our lo- from the local vendor, um, if we need them. The hope is, is we're not going to need them. And that is the reason why we keep communicating every other week. What's the status? Where are we at? Understanding when is the cameras gonna be put in, when is the trucks gonna be inspected? Does it shorten, shorten the time if they deliver them here in Marion versus uh, to Kilburg? So all of those little logistic pieces, we continue to keep talking about. And we're talking to Kilburg with those and Labrie on those. And so the people that can actually make things happen are the people we're talking to. I think the cart, probably, the cart delivery is probably the factor that I, you know, could go awry. But we had that week buffer in there to make sure that we had that time um, incorporated in that. But we'll certainly talk more about that.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, everyone, for your work on this. All right, next is the agenda review. The first item that's marked for discussion is A four on the second page. Any item prior to that? That needs discussion? Anything prior to A four? Otherwise, we'll go to the person celebrating her birthday. Rachel?
Thanks. Uh, this item was marked for discussion, just in case there's anything that council um, wanted to ask about the month report.
None. Thanks, Rachel. A five through A eight are not marked. Any questions on those items? And then we have Amber with A nine.
Good afternoon, council. It is time again for us to um, revisit our Marion Messenger contract. And so um, I'm asking for approval of a two-year contract with our current vendor, um, Cedar Graphics. And to the letter design, um, we've been working with them for the last seven years and would like to continue doing so. Um, sought bids um, in recent weeks and they were the low bid um, of three uh, responding organizations. The Marion Messenger, I think um, you're all very familiar and um, see it as a valuable source of information. Um, in our last community survey, ninety-one percent of residents said they used it as a major or minor source of information. Um, this is distributed to every household in the five-two-three-o-two zip code uh, four times a year. Um, on, twice a year, we include the play-by-play um, Parks and Recreation Activities Guide. And one new thing this year that um, we've been in contact with the school districts and want to give them an opportunity to reach all residents, provide updates um, from the districts. Um, and so on the opposite months, that the park and rec insert is in there, um, they would provide content for a school district um, insert that they would cover the cost of. So um, for four issues, um, and that really is what absorbs the increase in cost over the last time we had this contract. Um, and we would be reimbursed that through that partnership. Um, they are not required to do it if, if time, you know, um, constraints don't allow for that to happen. Um, we will just continue and have the, the Marion Messenger as it is. Um, but we do see that as a great partnership and way to um, extend um, an opportunity for them to reach residents.
I like that. Um, I think it just exemplifies, you know, the, the, what Marion's all about. Um, the one thirty-seven, hundred thirty, thirty-seven thousand, that incorporates the insert that the schools?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll be reimbursed.
Correct. They would reimburse up to six thousand dollars per issue um, that they do.
Questions for Amber? Yeah, it's definitely a, a big asset for us. So thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you.
Except it means that I have to write an article every. Okay, A ten uh, and A eleven are not marked. Any questions on those? Yes.
Just very briefly, a comment about A eleven. From my vantage point and, and over the last several months, Terrell and I have talked um, about um, just uh, IT and data security related things. From my vantage point, uh, the service we're, we're receiving in terms of our data center support is um, spot on. So I just wanted to, for my colleagues to say, I'm certainly uh, in favor of this. So. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to D one, Seth.
Yes, I just wanted to take note, this is gonna be master park planning for a three, uh, three park properties. Willow Park that will be impacted with the new Albert Net Road extension. Uh, the Lucor property that's twenty acres just northeast of Hunter's Ridge. And then the Dossel property, which is part of the um, Rookwood Estates development just on the east side of town. So as part of this process, this is gonna be um, uh, an item that we've worked throughout winter. Uh, and we'll be coming back to council uh, in uh, the springtime uh, for, with a proposal. Uh, but this is gonna be a community-driven project with surveys, uh, open houses, um, really driving uh, the community needs for these neighborhood parks. And we will be reaching out to the uh, city council with uh, uh, their participation uh, from a, a steering committee standpoint.
Thank you. Questions for Seth? Yeah, go ahead.
Was it contemplated to potentially include Willowood Park into this for what?
So we're gonna do Willowood all as part of the Aquatic Center.
As part of?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Anything else? Okay, um, then D two and E one on the next page are not marked. Any questions on those? And then we'll go to Dave with F one.
Uh, yes, on Thursday night, council have a motion to receive and file a request from John Georgian, uh, Georgian Auto, uh, that currently located in Manchester, Iowa. Uh, he is requesting an amendment to the uh, moratorium ordinance to allow him to uh, place a minor motor vehicle and service repair shop at fifty-eight hundred Lanier Avenue, which is the old Sprayland. Um, just kind of across from the back way into Walmart there, just north of the Iowa DOT um, sheds and buildings. Um, it's a very long definition. I'm not gonna read it verbatim. Uh, but rather tell you what it's similar to. Uh, it's Fire, uh, Firestone Auto and over by Lindell Mall, Goodyear, Anderson Auto. Uh, but would also allow for uh, your Jiffy Lube or five-minute lube type shops. Um, he is proposing to use the existing building, um, do quite a few modifications. If you read his request, he was going into some of the details of what he'll be performing. At the council recall, uh, folks could bring a project to the council and you would, you would take a look at or consider um, that request, uh, should they make it. We'll be doing this similar to how we did the live work uh, requests that came in last month, I believe. Uh, I don't have a, a firm date on the meeting yet, but it'll likely be the second meeting in September. Uh, that will formalize that request. It'll give me a little time to research the use a little bit more and uh, um, work with Mr. Georgian to see exactly what he's proposing.
Okay, so we're just receiving and filing.
That is correct.
So that, that's a good heads up for everyone. Thank you. Any questions for Dave on that? All right, nothing else is marked on the remainder of the agenda. Any questions on anything after F one? Okay, that brings us to the conclusion and the closed session.
Mr. Brand. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation and real estate transactions as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C and section twenty-one point five one J of the Iowa, of the Court of Iowa. Three separate items.
Second?
We moved in seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation and real estate transactions as permitted by the Iowa Code. We have the council's statement, please.
Thank you, Outner. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed sessions and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five one C and twenty-one point five one J.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Mayor Abouwassili?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're now adjourned to closed session. Thanks for joining us. Thanks, everyone, for all your great work. We'll see you on Thursday.